2019 City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem O'Ferry?
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember LeCure?
Here.
Councilmember Holland?
Here.
Please stand for the invocation, Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Scott, would you please?
Mr. Mayor, before we begin the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance, I would also ask that Pastor Scott have a moment of silence in memory of Roy Dickens, longtime police officer here in the city of Hazel Park, who passed away.
Okay, we'll consider that certainly. And I want to also mention, it may not have been said in a while, but thank you for allowing the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a great country, and we look forward to a great bunch of people continuing to do good business. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we take this moment, we lift our voice to you, and in this moment, we ask for your comfort in the family and the life and friends of Officer Dixon. And we pray that his life and service will continue to live on because of his legacy, and that we too will learn and grow. Thank you for your current protection over all of our council members, our first responders, all of the persons who are administration here in the city, and peace and protection in our city. Thank you for grace and wisdom to help us go forward with respect and understanding in order that we can be the family that you desire for us to be, making good benefit in the lives of our citizens. We pray this in the name of Jesus, amen. That's Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence. Thank you. And our prayers go out to the Dickens family.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I had an opportunity to work with Roy Dickens many times when I was a reserve officer here in the city of Hazel Park. And Roy was an outstanding police officer, and he served for many years. And then after he was done being a police officer, he also served for many years as our court officer here in the forty-third District Court. So he was well-known to all of us. He was a genuinely good man, and the city of Hazel Park has lost not just a wonderful public servant, but a man who was really part of the city's history. So my deepest sympathies go out to his family, and I will remember Roy Dickens fondly forever.
Thank you. Council, we get approval of the revised agenda.
Move approval of the revised agenda, Mr. Mayor?
Support.
Any dissension, discussion? Hearing none, we have an agenda. Civic announcements, anyone have any civic announcements about the community? The audience, seeing no one? And civic announcements? Closing civic announcements? Does City Council have any civic announcements they would like to announce? Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
So I'd like to remind everybody that August twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth is the Hazel Park Art Fair. It's a fundraiser for the Hazel Park Arts Council so that we can invest dollars in the community for art-based projects, as well as a great opportunity to get your birthday, anniversary, Christmas shopping out of the way. We are looking for volunteers. So if you go to our Facebook page for the Hazel Park Arts Council or the Hazel Park Art Fair, we do have links available there that you can sign up to volunteer. We're especially looking for early Saturday morning, seven a.m. shifts to come help our vendors get set up. It's going to be a great event. We have a lot of local artists, a few bands from Hazel Park, as well as the southeast region. So hopefully, I'll see some of you there volunteering. Otherwise, I hope to see you guys there having a great time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the council? May I close the civic announcements for the council, public discussion? Anyone wishing to speak for public discussion? I do want to make one thing clear before we have that, since there's so many people here. The City Council in no way, in light of what you've been reading online or from any political faction, we in no way have the control of the Elections Commission. The Elections Commission is made up of the city manager, the city attorney, and our city clerk. Also, the State County Elections Commission and the State Elections Committees have their own purviews. As City Council members, we are local politicians doing a selfless job to help and promote our community. And no matter how you may feel about one or the other candidates, we are trying to do our best and perceive to do the best job we can and promote the best benefit for our community. So if you want to speak at public discussion, please be respectful and mindful of that. Thank you. I'll open a public discussion. Who's first? Please give your name and address.
My name is Robert Babett. I'm a twenty-one-year resident and owner of Hazel Park. I live on four forty-five West Woodruff Avenue.
Go right ahead, sorry about that.
On July eighth, two thousand nineteen, I mailed a letter to the attention of you, Mayor Webb, and carbon copied it to city manager Ed Klobuchar, city councilpersons Amy Aubrey, Alyssa Sullivan, and Andrew LeCuro, police chief Brian Buckholz, and city attorney Alicia Schwartz, and one of my attorneys, Gary Lazar. After I sent this on the advice of my attorney, I also sent a copy to the Attorney General's office. I received response from city manager, three of the council people, and was asked to come in and read the letter to the council, which I'm about to do. Dear Mayor Webb, I have been a witness to some strange and troubling occurrences in this fine city. I have lived and owned my house on West Woodruff Avenue for over twenty-one years. I have a close friend who lives and is also a proud owner on West Milton Avenue between Ford and West End. I visit him several times each week. Nearly every time I'm at his house, I have seen Hazel Park police officers stopping at city council member Bethany Holland's house. The officers usually get out of their vehicles and either bring some package to Holland's house or leave with a package. On the night of July third, two thousand nineteen, at approximately five fifty p.m., there was an officer parked on the street. Apparently, he had been sitting there for some time. What he was doing, I'm not sure. I parked in front of my friend's house and stared at the officer, and then he immediately took off. I was at my friend's house from about five fifty p.m. to approximately seven o'clock p.m. During that time, I saw an additional three cars stop at Ms. Holland's house and enter her premises. Two of them left carrying a box of some material. I never see this type of behavior on my street. Is Ms. Holland entitled to some type of special protection by the HPPD? Or perhaps is she using the Hazel Park Police Department as her personal courier? I have also witnessed on several Fridays, Ms. Holland and her husband, sitting on their front porch, screaming and yelling expletives at drivers whom they believe have not stopped their vehicles properly at the four-way stop at the corner of West Milton and Ford. I am well aware that Ms. Holland does not have a professional bone in her body, but this appalling behavior is still unacceptable even for someone with her low standards. I've included a picture of a police vehicle parked at her house. Please note the vehicle parked on Ford is in a no-parking zone directly in front of a fire hydrant. If I were to do that, I would be immediately ticketed. The officer got out of his vehicle and spent nearly ten minutes in Ms. Holland's house. Was he on official police business? I think not. Apparently, many of the residents on Milton are concerned but are unwilling to complain because they feel intimidated by Ms. Holland and the rogue officers. My friend has raised this issue, excuse me, this issue several times at police headquarters, and little to nothing has been done, except he has been harassed by Hazel Park police officers with false accusations made by Ms. Holland. On one occasion, she accused him of following her to the Kroger store and stalking her. Nothing could be farther from the truth. He does not stalk people, and he rarely patronizes that incompetent Kroger. That store could be one of their finest, but instead it is completely substandard. My friend is a hard-working person who has recently gone back to college and just graduated with an electrical engineering degree in the top of his class. Why would he stoop to this level of drama? Only those with too much time on their hands would play these games. His complaints have fallen on deaf ears. Is that the quality, or in this case, lack thereof, a resident can expect from the Hazel Park Police Department? That is not why I moved here and planted roots twenty-one years ago. You could do much better than that. How about we start today? Is it really that tough to be professional? With all the good things happening lately in Hazel Park, it is sad to be represented on City Council by someone so unprofessional and classless. I plan on doing everything in my power to see that she is exposed and the voters can make an intelligent choice this fall. The officers that are acting as her personal security team need to be reprimanded for their unprofessional behavior. I have personally witnessed everything stated in this letter and will testify if needed. I do hope you will look into this promptly, or my next step will be to contact the media. Thanks in advance for your time and anticipated cooperation. Sincerely, Robert Babett.
I read the letter. Inquired to the city manager, and he agreed to do it, and did an investigation. The officers, I think, were up to, I think it was handled internally.
That is a correct statement.
I'll address this in my closing.
Ms. Holland, you could be a star on this council. But apparently, listening to the advice of your lackeys and your shills, you apparently have decided to go down the route of gross incompetence. As I see it, the bullying needs to stop today. Your abuse of authority is a disgrace and an eyesore to this community. And the only thing you can do with an eyesore is to identify it and to remove it. And it looks like that process is well on the way. Thank you very much.
We have one person that filled out a slip paper. Lee McLaughlin.
I'm short.
Name and address, please.
Lee McLaughlin, two-three-zero-two-nine Stover. Beth, I have to expose you too. How long have you been the neighborhood watch leader on your block?
Since two thousand eight.
And where did you get that training?
Hazel Park Police Department.
And don't you regularly attend neighborhood watch meetings?
Yep.
In addition to everything else that you do? A few weeks ago, Ms. Holland noted that something across the street wasn't quite right. She thought some illegal activity was taking place. And so per her training, as neighborhood watch leader on her block, she alerted authorities because there were four young children in that house being exposed to some really bad things, allegedly, because I know legally, that's what I need to say. Last night, there was a raid on that house. People are in jail. People have been charged. But thanks to Bethany, four kids who are living in a nightmare are safe. Four children, thanks to Bethany Holland, will recover from what they've been through. And four children have a chance to lead a normal life now, thanks to Bethany Holland. What she has endured in her personal life, and the attacks in social media, have been outright lies about her, assumptions about her character, assassinations every day. The allegations that were just brought forth by Mr. Barbett were just not true. And perhaps, if he had stopped to think that maybe something in his neighborhood was going down, he wouldn't have made those allegations. Perhaps someone needs to stop and think that there's a reason other than something bad that something is happening. I believe you have a retired police officer friend that came to your house for lunch.
No more questions, please. Just make statements.
Bethany Holland has always put the people in this community first. She's selfless. She has integrity. I'm proud to call her my friend. When I grow up, I want to be just like her. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at public discussion? Name and address, please.
Nick Benequisto, fourteen-eleven East Eight Mile Road. I'll be brief. I know there's a lot of very important topics to cover here. I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce myself to the esteemed council and thank you all for your work and support. As I'm a new business owner, as of the last three years, working with the municipality here in Hazel Park has been a seamless process. And we look forward to growth and prosperity between both our organizations. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you for coming.
Yeah, special thank you to Jeff Campbell as well.
Nick, can you please tell us what your business is in a quick statement about it?
GT Scrap Recycling. We process and scrap and recycle all ferrous, non-ferrous metals, cardboard, paper, plastic, anything to keep out of the landfills, so. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at public discussion? Seeing no one else, we'll close public discussion. Council, approve of the consent agenda?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda, items one through sixteen, Mr. Mayor.
Support.
Any discussion? I'd like to see if any business owners here for three fifty East Nine Mile, Deon LLC, nine sixty-four East Ten Mile, Stage Twenty-Six Inc. Are you here? Come on up. It's time for your commercial. Give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Aquil Denison. I reside in Bradford, one-nine-five-five-eight Imperial Highway.
Thank you. Welcome to Hazel Park. Tell us about your business. Tell us your hours. Tell us what you do. Come on, don't be shy.
Yes, we are Stage Twenty-Six doing business as M26. We look forward to opening business in Hazel Park on Ten Mile Road. Our services will be simple. We'll be supplying engine parts to local auto shops and to private customers. Eighty percent of our business will be online. Twenty percent of our business will be door-to-door. We will be servicing the metro Detroit area. And also, not only will we be, excuse me, supplying commission parts, we'll also be supplying used parts. So we look to do a little bit of business here in town, and hopefully we'll make an impact with the city.
Okay, welcome.
Good timing with the dream cruise.
I'm sorry?
Good timing with the dream cruise.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here from Grinders, two-two-eight-two-two, John R.? Seeing no one there, I think that does it. Any dissension to the authorization? Oh, sorry, missed a, is there two-four-nine-three-two, John R., Red Oak Cat Two? And Impact Collision? Any dissension to the consent agenda approval? We have a consent agenda approval. Takes us down to the administrative reports. Mr. Klobuchar, this is an ordinance change.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an ordinance change with respect to the Fire Prevention Code, the amendments and the insertions. Melissa Schwartz worked very hard on this, and I will turn it over to her to brief you on this.
I'm Mr. Mayor and Council. The current ordinance has two thousand fifteen code, and therefore, we needed to update our code to be complimentary and in compliance with the two thousand eighteen Fire Prevention Code, international code. And therefore, I went ahead and updated those items. And in addition, we needed to establish some geographic limits within the city limits of Hazel Park. That was broad in the code itself for each particular area to adopt. And we also established the violation penalties, as well as the non-compliance penalties. And we carved out an exception if there's imminent danger or harm from notice.
Thank you. Council?
I'll move approval of adopting the fire, the new fire ordinance.
I'll support.
Need more discussion? Dissension? We have approval of the changes to the fire code. Boards of Commissions, anyone have one? If not, we'll move on. Board of Commissions, over to you. No table items, new business? Anyone have any new business?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
I don't want to give the specific address, but we have the problem house. Something has got to be done with that. It has been a roller coaster ride. The doors are getting kicked in on that property, no matter who's in there. And the neighborhood has had it.
You'll give me the address after the meeting, and we will get it taken care of.
Thank you.
Any other new business from any council members? Close new business communications from the department heads. Chief Bukos, would you like to have any communications? All right. Tom? Anything? Who else is back there? Lacy.
Oh, you got Lacy, you got Jared, you got Jeff, you got, you got some people.
I'm Mayor and Council. Just some updates. I know February, we're going to talk about some of the roads, but Nine Mile Project, hopefully will be showing up next week. We're keeping our fingers crossed. They were supposed to start a couple of weeks ago. They're still putting things together. They're going to keep the road open as two-way traffic. The lanes are a little narrow for the work they need to do, so hopefully everything goes well. But we did discuss that today.
Is there still going to be a possibility of North John R. being done this year? Or is that going to be a delay?
The bid closing is tomorrow. So we're driving on, so we'll know a lot more tomorrow afternoon and see what companies have bid on that project.
Well, thank you again. South John R. looks good.
I like it. There's just a couple of things left, pedestrian crossing lights to come and everything else, but the paint, everything looks good. Looks good at night also. A lot of reflectivity to that. I see bicycles riding down on our now, and it looks good.
It's been great during the rain, too, versus Woodward Heights, that striping.
We're supposed to get that restriped as well, aren't we? Woodward Heights.
Well, we have projects on Woodward Heights still coming.
For winter.
Same company.
Yeah, I think we're going to try to restripe this year because it's so bad that it's a, it's a traffic.
Yeah, it goes away.
So we're going to, yeah, we've talked.
Yeah, so we have from in front of the rec to the freeway to do new asphalt. And then they're also going to do from Batel to Hazelwood this year. And then after that's done, we can get some new stripes down.
I do want to say one thing about the road construction. Being I was the first leg of having a business on that road, it does hurt your business a little bit far as traffic flow and getting in and out and working around. But I will make a suggestion to the public. Please patronize those businesses that are having those construction woes to help them get through, even if it's just going in and buying a pop or something. Because, you know, they're, they struggle through that. Like the gas station next door to me, they were struggling through that month and a half period. And other businesses down the street from me, Point Liquor and a few others, they were all kind of hit. But try to slide in there and at least patronize them a little bit and through the, through the woes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, come on back up here for one second. We'll brief City Council about our meeting today with our consulting engineers, Hennessy. We met with them today, and we're in the process of applying for a TAP grant for next year to hopefully enhance North John R. And as part of this TAP grant, we'll also be making an application to the foundation for some additional playground equipment at one of our parks. I don't want to say too much more because I don't want to get everybody's hopes up high, but they were very.
We have to build it?
What's that? We do not have to build it, although I'm sure you, I'm sure you and Andy can teach me to use power tools again and, you know, well, I know how to use a router. I know how to use all kinds of things. So, yeah, we can build it if we have to. But we do have, we're hopeful that this is going to go. I know Mayor Pro Tem, Amy Aubrey, she like sends me an email every day reminding me of the TAP grant. I think that she forgets, thinks I'm going to forget that email that she, I just got the day before. I can see how happy she is that, yes, we actually, we did it. And we even, we even talked about how, gee, Amy would really like this and that. So hopefully, all of you will like what we're doing, and hopefully we'll get it.
And part of this is connecting our bike routes with our sister city Ferndale next door, through Woodward Heights, down to John R., connected to some of our parks. It's all good stuff, so.
That's great.
Can, can I make a request to please include some more permanent bike racks, maybe at some of our parks? It's been a request I've been getting. I know Tom is hooking us up for the art fair to make sure we have bike parking, but it really does need to be a more permanent feature so people can safely lock their bikes up while in the playground.
Bikes, the signage, we talked about all these things that, you know, you'll see like in Ferndale, I think they're a couple of steps ahead of us, but they have signs pointing to the next city, how far it is, distance and everything, things like that. The green paint through intersections, these are all things we're looking at, so.
Thank you.
It's fun.
Thanks, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you. Serene Pacquiao is also here. Did you have anything to say?
Well, Serene's coming up. I wanted to let everybody in town know something very important. We made our first arrest today for somebody defacing the new structure at Scout Park. So that's a positive thing. Yeah, I want to thank our police department for being alert on that. And we have hired an attendant there who will be watching and monitoring what happens there at Scout Park. So again, parents, please tell your kids, if we catch them, we're going to ban them from the park for a period of time, and we're going to seek cost recovery from you. And we may issue a parental responsibility ticket as well. You could need to be coming to see our judge here, and you could be subject to conviction of a misdemeanor. So make sure that you tell your kids that you don't want to have them defacing Scout Park play structure. This community is very proud of it, and I'm amazed at how fast I get a Facebook message or a posting, or I get tagged every time there's graffiti. I get pictures of the graffiti the next day. You wouldn't believe how many renditions of human anatomy I've seen in my mailbox in the past week. But we go out there, and we clean it off, and we clean it off every single time. And we're going to prosecute the kids who did this, and we're going to prosecute their parents if that's warranted, because this is a nice thing, and we're going to keep it nice. Also want to know, let everybody know too, we have cameras now that just went in at Scout Park as well. So if you don't know it, you're on candid camera. We're going to put up a sign to let everybody know so they have the reasonable expectation of privacy. But you now are on camera at Scout Park Play Area. So we're not going to put up with graffiti or vandalism. Apparently, one of the parents said, what are you doing to this young teenager? And he said, you're not going to stop us. We're going to keep putting graffiti on it. Well, we're going to keep cleaning it off, and now you're not going to become here anymore. So I think we will probably win in the long run. It's better to just play nice and enjoy the fact that you have this great community asset than to try to deface it. I'm just sorry.
Okay, Serene.
Oh, yeah, I would definitely second all that. We do have a park attendant that is now at Scout Park. His name is Rick Taylor, and he's always available picking up trash, trying to prevent bullying, and trying to keep his eyes on the playground. So he is there from two to seven until Labor Day. After Labor Day, we'll look at maybe a different set of hours. But there is a park attendant, and thank you to everyone who helped out with Scout Park. It was so much fun, and it really is an asset to the community, fun and tiring.
I was going to say, you look pretty tired after.
Yeah, I mean, it was very tiring, but. And then also, I'm also here today just to say we're going to renew with Skurbek Family Carnival for Memorial Day weekend. We have a great working relationship with them, and they've donated stuffed animals to the city of Hazel Park for the purpose of Hazel Park. They're just a great partner, so that's also. They're just a great partner, so that's also why I'm here. So thank you.
Thank you, Serene. Lacy?
Mr. Mayor, I want to thank Lacy Christensen for all of her help with contract negotiations. We're settled up with most of the unions at this point and she's been my awesome partner in those negotiations this time and I want to thank her.
Well, thanks for coming up. Can you give the council a little synopsis of where we stand in our budget at this point? How with the road construction and everything going on?
So we're a month into the new year. Everything's tracking on budget with that. I'm working to finish up and close up 2019. My audit won't be until October. So we're working on that. We factored in a lot of the union negotiation impacts into the budget already for you prior. The, obviously the roads are up, all been bonded out for, so that's set and in play. We'll get the reimbursement in 2021 from the federal government.
And for the general public, the way the bonds are being repaid is for, from what we were currently paying on the roads that we just paid off.
Correct, a couple of years ago, yeah.
Just want to clarify out there, a lot of people didn't know how we were paying for it. Just want to get it back out there. We were still, we were already paying for some road, new roads from 20 years ago. We just paid them off and we just continued paying some of that money right back into the pot to keep the roads going.
From MDA Act 51 money.
We didn't have to raise a sales tax. But thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Lacy.
Jeff? Nothing? All right, communication from City Attorney?
I have nothing, you're, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First of all, you wanted me to address the issue with Mr. Babbitt, you're correct. I did receive the letter, I did speak with the police chief. We did address that issue, I think that matter has been addressed. I just want to say that nobody has any more authority over the police department or any less authority over the police department. No member of council has direct administrative authority over anything. You govern by resolution of a board, not by individuals. And I want to make the public aware of that. That said, don't think any of our police officers, I told us Mr. Babbitt, were rogue in any way. One, I think, was just stopping by, has a long relationship, personal matter, and he picks up dinner. So it's not, I don't think it's rogue. But again, we do want to make sure, and I'm sure all five of you want to make sure that we are above board and we're always projecting an image of integrity and propriety. So, and of course, our police officers do do a fantastic job. Crime is at record level lows. So I want to thank Chief Bukos. I also want to thank Chief Story, his fire department just responded to another house fire on Melville. I just got the text from Chief Story, he said there are no injuries. Again, we have outstanding public services. And I have outstanding department heads. I really am humbled by how good they all are every day that I come in. I'm amazed at how well they put up with me and I'm just grateful that I get a chance to serve with these people and make Hazel Park a great place. So that's all I have.
Any more questions?
Do you have anything for me?
No.
I will answer any questions that you have.
The Protem has a question for who?
It's a combination of Serene and Chief Buckles. So I know just a month or two ago, Oakland County Sheriff has been distributing gun locks. And I know we just announced a hunter safety class through the rock department. So I was wondering if there could be some cooperation between the two to maybe make sure some of our potential hunters are aware of the gun locks that are available through our police department. Make sure that they are encouraged to use them as well.
As far as the gun locks, we plan on putting something out on the website, promoting that again. We do have plenty of gun locks. We do provide them.
As far as the hunter safety program, that's directly through the DNR. So they provide the equipment and anything, materials that are distributed for that program.
If they don't distribute gun locks, can we make sure that we direct them to that?
Sure.
Very convenient resource.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to have communications from Councilwoman Sullivan.
I want to welcome all the new businesses to the city, those that are here. Thank you for coming and we hope we have a long, fortuitous relationship with ones that are already established. Wanted to remind everybody to come out to the Hazel Park Art Fair. It's the 24th and 25th, 11 to 7, 11 to 5. Music, entertainment, great food trucks. This is our eighth year? Our eighth year. Something I'm really proud of and I think it's got a little bit of something for everybody. Also, wanted to remind people that truth, integrity, honesty, they're important. And please remember to be kind to your neighbor and try not to get caught up in unnecessary drama. I do appreciate people coming out and speaking up. I appreciate people that, that see that there are needs and seek to get those needs met. So thank you for your participation and thank you for coming and we'll keep doing what we can up here. Be safe.
Councilman LaCarrel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the administration, a question, just a question. Are we, we scheduled ribbon cutting for the Scout Park?
We have not. I spoke with Stuart Sherman just last week. He is trying to corral the board members for availability. Two of the younger board members live out of state and so we'd like to have everybody here. We know they're meeting again in October, but I'd much like to have, very much like to have a ribbon cutting ceremony before the summer is over. So I will, I'm waiting for him to get back with me. He's herding cats, trying to get the family and the other board members together. Love to have that done, but he's already talking about...
There's only so many weekends in the...
I know.
Summer.
But we had a whole lot more fun talking about what we're gonna do next.
Just want, I, I'm really excited about the bike lanes coming in, in the roads that we have now. And I know the Hazel Park Casual Bike Club that meets at 7 o'clock on Wednesdays behind the high school has been downed a few times already. And to that end, I'd like to remind everybody that bicyclists riding at night are supposed to have lights on. That is a state law. Please watch out for the bicyclist. I'll be, do you guys need me to go onto the volunteer site and volunteer for Saturday morning for the art fair?
I was gonna send you a private message, yes I do.
Well, that's right, a form for all the volunteers to fill out.
Yeah, that's how we track people.
I'll be there. Hope to see y'all at the art fair, it's a great, great time. Bands, everything, the art, I've got a piece of art in the house, right, from almost every year. It's a lot of fun. Thank you for everybody coming out tonight and have a great night.
Councilwoman Hallam?
Thank you all for coming out tonight. Bear with me if I have trouble compiling my thoughts, it's been tough sitting up here for the past couple of years and almost every single meeting, I'm a target. First, I'd like to extend my condolences to the family of Roy Dickens. We are blessed to have had him serve our community and my condolences to his family and loved ones and everybody that he touched and made a difference in their lives. Also like to acknowledge that there was a fire on Melville this evening. It was just a few houses away from where our former animal control officer lived and he was devastated. And advised that the fire department did bring someone out that was probably sleeping because he was not fully clothed, but he was walking and transported and probably why Chief isn't here tonight. But thank you to the, the ones that keep the watch for us. On John R., thank God that construction is over. We had a lot of traffic that came through Ford at that time and it did hurt some of the businesses that relied on the foot traffic and the ability to pull in, but it's done now. I'm seeing bicyclists all over the place of all ages, which is pretty cool. And one thing that I'm really excited about is we have a couple of additional crosswalks. Previously, they were at Eight Mile, Myers and the Service Drive. So we have two more and one of them, hopefully Dairy Park opens back up because it's right by there. In response to the letter that I didn't see. So this is kind of difficult, I took a couple of notes. The one thing that rings in my head is that my husband and I are sitting on the porch. I don't have a chair on the front porch that will hold him. He's usually in the house, so my husband is not on the porch. And if he's yelling, he's legally deaf, so he does tend to be a little bit loud, which is why I yell at him and people think I'm screaming at him, but he can't hear me. That's probably a good thing for him. I don't care what your problems are with me, but don't throw the police department under the bus. They have done nothing improper. And I did note down the date of July 3rd and the timeframe. And I remember seeing a squad car parked across from the house that's in reference here. And it sat for about 30 minutes and it didn't do anything. And I was ticked off because I thought they were gonna run traffic on the stop sign. Because at that point, we had all the construction traffic cutting through. And I was wondering, why didn't they stop anybody? So yeah, there was a car there. I don't know if it was part of the undercover surveillance, if it, I don't know. But it wasn't there for me. And as far as the other officer, this really irks me. Rather than assume something, why not ask? Why not ask? That gentleman is a retired Hazel Park police officer that I've known a long time. He's a bachelor. So once a week when he comes in to, to run traffic on Eight Mile, to pay for this courtroom here, to write the tickets for that, and he comes by to grab a carryout of home cooking instead of fast food. That's all that is. That's why it's boxes and to-go containers. Been doing it for a long time. There was nothing improper there. So again, you got a problem with me, take it up with me, but do not impugn the integrity of our law enforcement men and women. They do an amazing job. Lastly, I made news because I was not certified to run in the election. This morning, I contacted... We can't? Well, if I don't, if I'm not on the ballot, I'll be running as a write-in. So I'll be around to be a burr in somebody's backside a little longer. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
I want to give a huge shout out to Tom Jones for all the work and the emails and the text messages that he's been putting up with me regarding the TAP grant. I get those emails from SubCog on a regular basis. I've been actively pushing for more grant funding to ease the burden on all, everyone in this room so that we can redirect our taxes into some other causes, like maybe our parks, instead of our road bonds. So as many grants as I find, you're gonna get emails over and over and over again. That is my mission. So...
No, I appreciate it, you're passionate about it and it's a, it's, it's a great grant.
Yep, so also, we, a couple of weeks ago, with some local business owners, residents, some amazing people, the Hazel Park Nature Initiative that focuses on using city property to convert to some native pollinator gardens to benefit not only our pollinators, but as well as help reduce eventually costs through our DPW department for maintenance. We put in a new pollinator garden outside City Hall at the intersection of Nine Mile and John R. It's still a work in progress, so, but I expect to see many, many flowers there soon. We did do the first round of planting. We'll be doing a second round of planting in the fall, as well as more plantings in the spring to bring in more flowers. So we're always looking for volunteers, but we did have 11 volunteers a couple of weeks ago that worked hard through the sun. It's a very sunny intersection. So I want to thank everybody that came out to, to work on that. So it was through the Nature Initiative in partnership with Mulberry Hill Wildlife. We also had the Flower Club there that's been maintaining the flower pots around the city as well. So it's a really exciting project, I'm really happy to finally start getting this off, off the ground. We've got a few more proposals in the works that we'll be submitting to the city for some more areas to do some more improvements. So I'm really excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say thanks to everyone coming out this evening. I want to say again, thank you to all the volunteers at the Scout Park project. It was a big endeavor, we all put countless hours in, whether you had a few hours or a lot of hours. It was, what was accomplished was the main goal. Supportive of our children and our community, and that was the biggest role of the park. And for, hopefully for a long time to come. The other thing I'd like to bring up is it is hard to sometimes navigate this board up here and still get your opinions across all at the same time. So I just want to, you know, get everything I can all together at one time here. There's challenges within our own cities factions and I think that the big broader scope is to look at the future of how our city can move forward and not have to look at what has happened in the past. And I think that's what we all need to do, is reevaluate how to move forward. I do want an update on the CVS project for the public.
Sure.
Pardon me? The CVS project at, pardon me, Mr. Klobuchar?
Yes.
Up there on John R., I'd like to have an update on when they're gonna start. I've had a lot of questions on, because we've been promoting it so much.
Yeah, we have, well, actually, again, they've been promoting it, the news picked up on it.
Exactly.
We have not been. We do not control whether or not...
And I know you said something about the engineering was coming through.
We just spoke with them, Jeff has a meeting with them next week, they will be in. They claim that they're putting things up for bid and they're moving forward.
Okay, so we should see some, start some by September 1st, hopefully.
Hopefully. Again, we don't control it, obviously, it's privately owned, we have approved that.
That's why I had to ask.
Yeah. But we have other business people too who've also approached us and if they don't do something, these guys are willing to move in and do the same thing. So there's a great deal of interest in this and I'm excited about making something happen here. But we cannot control the timeline.
No.
That's like we're putting out, and I want everybody to know and understand this too. Okay, we're putting North John R. out for bid. Those bids are due for that project on, at 2 o'clock on Thursday. Again, we hope we're gonna get a good bidder at a reasonable price. There is a great deal of construction going on now and it's very difficult to get road crews and bidders and things like this. Some things are beyond our control, they're going to happen. But just like South John R., which we had planned for last year, it was beyond our control completely because there was a strike last year. Well, this year, you know, there has been one labor shortage, or stoppage, pardon me, at one company, but there is a lot of road construction going on. And that makes it sometimes difficult for us to get our stuff in and get our stuff done. So I want everybody to know that. Same thing with developments and projects. All we can do is tell you what they've told us. We can't force them to move at any given speed. And in this case, we're hopeful that he, they're gonna come in and they're gonna have a great timeline for us and they're gonna knock that thing down before construction season over and they'll be building in the spring and everything will be wonderful.
Thank you. I just wanted an update, thanks.
Got more. You, you also had asked us about an update for marijuana businesses too and we're in the process of compiling that. We've got a lot of good news here in Hazel Park and I'm excited and I want to share it.
I did, I did want to bring up that there's a lot of new renovations on old buildings. There's a real estate office and a title company coming on John R. There's a couple of other new areas in the town. It's, we got the new barber shop on the north end of town. There's some different venues coming in rather than just the same old same old. I think it's very nice that we see a little bit of diversity in type of businesses that we have going on. I do have one question, I have the, one thing at the chief, I need you to come up. One clarification for everybody. The center lane on John R. is not a passing lane, am I correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Turn lane only.
Thank you. There's been a huge debate on social media. I watch it, I don't respond, but I watch what's going on because I don't want to get into a philosophical debate online. But I do watch.
And it's not as a merge lane either, you don't get in it and pick up speed to try to get into the next lane. If you're, if you pull into that, stop and wait until you can get into the travel lane.
And we need a little bit of patrolling down there. If we pull someone over for passing, would you please just give them a warning and let them know that that is, that is a turn lane? And then after a few weeks, then proceed with tickets.
We do allow the officers to use discretion.
Yeah, I, I think it's nice to give people that, a respect, that they need to learn a little bit.
I think if you're driving in the center...
If you take the time...
Get a ticket and I think you did it immediately. It's the, you're gonna kill somebody.
Yeah, that's a dangerous thing to do and...
I'd give them a ticket, fine.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm pretty passionate, I'm pretty liberal when it comes to that kind of stuff, but I mean...
We'll give it some more attention. They've been advised, but apparently it's not enough.
You have the right to remain silent.
Yeah, I speak a lot, you know. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Support.
Any dissension? Everybody wanna go home? Have a good evening.